All right, welcome now to our Board of Selects meeting for January thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. We will start off this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is not one of our normally scheduled meetings. This meeting is held right now for us to go over warrant articles for the deliberation. We will be doing some minor other housekeeping business. But again, this meeting here today is basically for our deliberation hearing warrant articles coming up. We need to do our, did everybody get to see the manifest from last week that we didn't get, we didn't have to look over? Any questions on it? Anybody want to make an approval?
What's the date on it?
One twenty-five and, yeah, the COPA manifest is one twenty-five and one thirty-one. How do we have one for?
Well, one thirty-one is today. Why wouldn't we have something for that?
Well, I'm saying I'm looking at it right here in my hands.
We just, we did some today also, which you may not have seen, so you don't, if you don't want to approve that one, that's fine, but.
For this one, twenty-five.
You have right there.
I'll make a motion. We approve the accounts payable manifest of January twenty-fifth.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
It was just the payable manifest?
Correct.
Yes, payable.
Okay, non-payable? Correct.
Sorry, I gotta grab my stuff. Do you want to pass that around for us to sign? Oh. Yep, sorry. Moving into the deliberation session, warrant articles.
All right, so Chris, you need us to decide who's going to present what warrant articles, right?
Yeah, two, two things, you have to approve the warrant tonight so we can post it. Today's the last day legally, we can do that. You have the latest collection of edits. Nothing really dramatic. Getting the dollar amounts, the recommendations, the I's and T's correct. If you have anything else grammatical that you found, we're of course happy to fix that. But this is your last crack at it, so either you go through it as you're talking about it, or we do it as a bunch, however you prefer. But we will need to get a final printing of it tonight before you go home and have you sign it. So that is the warrant itself, and then talk through how you're going to approach deliberative, who's going to present what. And that's it.
So.
Now, we, we already read through these previously and did our recommendations, so we don't need to go through that again, do we?
You don't have to, no. There's only four of you here on the recommendations and you.
The same four.
Same four here, so.
Wait, no, wait, oh, you weren't here, okay.
So you could amend that portion if you want. You can't change any dollar amounts at this point. You really can't change the language of anything with a dollar amount because the Budget Committee has already done with it.
Yeah.
How would we do that? Like, if I wanted to have my.
You just do it, do it by vote of the board, just like you did, you're just amending it to reflect that if, if you're all comfortable with that, that's your.
But then we're still on the same four, nothing.
No, you're adding a vote. You would just add a vote to whichever one.
Can I do them in bulk?
Yeah, that's up to you all. It's not for me to decide, but if you all decide that that's how you want to, if you want to let her just add in bulk her recommendation to all of those votes, you could do that since we haven't posted it yet.
I don't mind doing that, Donna.
I appreciate that.
Oh, just so that we have a total of five.
So you have a total of five people. Yes, I'm not suggesting you revote and ignore the last vote.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Were you all, you were, you were all, it was all, four other people were here and you did it all at once, and they're all consistently the same four people in the last round of recommendations, and she missed all of it.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
Yes, so we can just add them in bulk and know that it's accurate and.
Right. So Donna, when you go through, you're just going to go through?
It's basically add one yes to every one where there's a select board vote. Add one in favor. There's two, two that were not for O.
Okay.
So, do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, let's do that, just so it's clean in the record.
Okay. Should I make the motion to allow me to do it, or should I just make the motion saying update to reflect my vote?
First thing, why don't we start off saying I make a motion that we let Donna Danus add her votes into record for the warrant articles upcoming this year, two thousand twenty-two warrant articles.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I would like to add one additional in favor vote to Articles Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
So for the record, we are changing all the board recommendations by adding one vote in favor of all the articles.
Four, four through seventeen.
Four through seventeen.
Yeah, sorry, there you go.
Yep.
So Chris, um, can we talk about order tonight, or is it too late to do that?
Uh, it's.
That's okay if it is.
What, are you moving the amendments?
Uh, no, there was just some question that came up at the budget hearing about the order of like Article seven and Article Fifteen.
Fifteen is not dependent on seven. There is sufficient funds in there, so that may have been where that conversation came from. That's been the case in the past where you need to put money in before you can take money out.
Okay.
So there is, there isn't a relationship like that. Doesn't mean you can't change it. If you were to, you can, you can change it, but I would ask that it really be.
Yeah, I know, because you had to make changes.
It's the DRA system that gets ugly where, this is just a text document. We can do all kinds of things with this, but it's the other side, so it is possible.
Okay, and the only one away. So Article four and five. Articles four and five have changes that we would have to make on the floor of the deliberation section, right?
Uh, five, I have one proposed for you. Four, I don't know of, but you, yes.
It looks like it was changed from four thousand four hundred.
That's, uh, no, these, the edits that you see are going to be accepted and built in. I'm showing you the edits that I made since your last look at this.
You can do five, though, too?
Five is.
Personnel. Because that's, that's substantial different than what the Budget Committee approved.
No, those are the Budget Committee numbers. Those are the one.
Oh, 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 okay, got it. So you have, got it.
Yes, we have a, I'm, I've given you a separate thing that is, that proposes that you amend this, but this is the language that the Budget Committee saw and the numbers that the Budget Committee saw. We're not changing those.
Any questions, anybody? So how do we want to do the order, or who wants to speak?
Well, do we need to vote and approve these first?
We already did.
I mean, accept them in their edited form?
Yeah, you need, you need to finalize, make a vote to finalize the warrant.
But we don't have to do it article by article?
No.
So make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the two thousand twenty-two warrant as edited in its final form.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? There we go. So who wants to read first? Well, I mean, who wants to, how, we're going to start picking articles? Yeah.
Hey, Tyler.
I mean, is there a method that we've done? I'm trying to remember last year if there was a method that we picked to.
We just kind of went by, through them one by one, and we're like, we kind of just went like, oh, Johnson here.
But should somebody like, I mean, just in fashion of saying, would be right, somebody, because we need somebody who's obviously going to read the article, and then we need somebody that's going to second the article.
Yeah, I think the, the other thing that we have to be able to do as we pick these is that we have to be able to speak to them and explain, you know, why we support it, why we put it here.
So for starters, like, as, as far as who's going to give the narrative, I mean, there's a bunch we can knock out right away, like the, all, all the fire department stuff, right? That's going to be the chief.
That's chief, yep.
And ambulance operations, ambulance purchase, that's the chief.
Mm-hmm.
We move them, though.
Yes.
We move them and then he gets up and does the narrative.
Yes.
On, uh, on five, the personnel for the fire department, did you see the amendment that I sent you that would fix the numbers?
Yep.
And are you willing to propose that and explain it? In, in talking with the chief, we felt like it would be better if you.
Yep.
Rather than muddling the messages, we have to come, kind of correct the warrant article in one.
Yep.
Step. And we also want to explain the warrant article and have a discussion about it.
Yep.
We didn't want to muddle those two things, so we thought that a, a Select Board member would introduce the article, propose the amendment, fix the numbers.
Yeah.
And then let him tell the story.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you'll, you'll give the intro and.
Yeah, I don't mind.
Okay.
So I'll move it.
So you were talking about number five?
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's going to be you, Donna?
Yeah, who's wants to second?
I'll second it.
I also gave the moderator a heads up that that was going to be coming.
Cool.
We should have all of our edits like pre-typed.
We will.
Yeah, so we, we've got a sheet to hand to, to Bonnie and, and all that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and in that case, we'll, you know, we'll have a slide for the projector ready and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, backing up, Tyler.
Yeah.
Have you had, did you talk with the Budget Committee at all about them presenting operating budget?
No, don't they usually?
They're supposed to.
Yeah.
I mean, I always did, and I know Chat always did before, when he was chair before me, so.
Okay.
And I know Miska did after me, so it's tradition.
And that would be Michelle.
Yes. Oh, she's up for that, but.
Well, she doesn't do it, um, Becker, he'd do it.
John, yeah.
Do you want to just confirm?
Yeah, I'll send it in.
So do we?
So Article four is going to be a Budget Committee member.
Do we move it? I can't remember.
Uh, yeah, you have, just to, the moving and seconding, it doesn't, doesn't mean anything. It's just, it just lubricates things, so it speeds things up for the moderator. Anybody can move and second the stuff, but you map it out just to speed things up.
Does that include reading the article?
Uh, I think you typically move it as printed or as presented, or, yeah.
And she, she reads it first.
She often reads it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll move on Article four. I just need somebody to second.
I'll second.
And then, Michelle? Hopefully. I'll just put B.C.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Michelle's going to read it, right, or explain it?
Should there be any, like, do you want to do any rhyme or reason to this, like, should all the highway ones be put forward by the same person at the end of the floor?
There's really no hard and fast rule that we have to divvy it all up equally. I'd be happy to, to move or second any of the fire department ones and the police department one.
Okay, so you want.
I'll move or second any of them, I don't care.
That doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want to.
All right.
So just for, let's, Donna, you and I will do all the, all the fire department ones.
So let's just actually go through, before we say, let's go through and say which, which article it is that we're talking about.
You want to go through, like, all right, roads is.
We'll just say that, okay, Tony, you're going to do Article six for the fire department, whatever, so that we just know, so I can all write it down and you can take better notes on it.
So roads, yeah, I'll move on roads.
Is road six?
Yes. Sorry, yeah, Article six, and that's our annual three hundred thousand dollar road maintenance. Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tyler, you want to take that second?
Which one?
Six.
Six.
Yeah.
Who's moving six? I'm sorry.
I am.
Tony's doing six, right?
Yeah, and then who's going to?
I'll second it.
Who's, who's going to tell the story?
I'll tell the story?
Well, whoever moves it should tell the story.
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah.
Good.
I mean, that, that one's easy. It's, it's boilerplate. We do it every year.
Yep.
Okay, highway vehicle?
I'll do it.
I was just going to say we should make Ben move that one.
Well, that's not. Yeah, so I'll, I'll move that one.
And I'll second it.
And I'll explain it. And you're going to second it, right?
Yes.
Fire vehicle reserve fund, you want to do that, one move that one down?
Yeah, I just want to, Article fifteen, then, that's what we're talking about. Who's going to move that?
No, no, we were talking seven. John's going to move it, I'll second, and John will explain it.
And now eight is fire vehicle capital reserve.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I'll do that one.
I'll second.
And the chief will, he'll explain it.
So eight's the chief?
I'll move.
I wasn't writing that down. Eight was.
For eight?
Yeah, I was, I was.
So it's Tyler, Donna, and the fire chief.
Got it.
It's eight. I'll move nine. And.
John, you want a second?
Yep.
And we'll, we'll phone be prepared to, yeah, okay.
Yeah, you, you can feel comfortable, given, you know, there's, there's not a long story to tell. If you, if you want to explain it and have, and have the chief there for questions, you can do that, too. That's, you know, with these relatively straightforward ones, like the deposit to the reserve fund.
Right, right, right.
You could just fall back on the, on the chief for questions if you need it, but.
Okay.
I'll do the, I'll do ten, the library lift.
Who's?
I'll second that.
Who was seconding number nine?
Uh, John.
I am.
Okay. And then, oh.
Jen Phillips.
What's that?
Jen Phillips.
Jen Phillips.
Library trustee, she, she looks like she has a customer. Do you have an email address for her?
I do.
Send it to me, please. I mean, we know what the objections are going to be given the conversation in the book.
Yeah, yeah. I heard some of that.
Yeah.
Raised an eyebrow.
Well, you want me to do number eleven?
Sure.
Sure, I'll second it.
I mean, I, I'll do twelve, unless you want it, John.
Does it?
I'll do twelve.
I'll second that one, too. And you're going to present, okay.
Other. By one.
Thirteen, ambulance operations. Go ahead and do that one.
I'll do that one.
I'll second.
And the chief will get up and speak about all of these, too, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. And I'll move, um, I'll move fourteen.
Uh, I'll second.
This is not a Budget Committee favorite. I'll be more than happy to jump in to state that one.
Fifteen?
Yep.
I'll second that. You want to give the narrative on it, or do you want to?
Uh, yeah, I'll give the narrative.
Or should we ask Sean to?
I'll give the narrative. I'll get a quick briefing of Sean on that or something, just quickly set that down. There's no, a little more detail, but I'm pretty sure I remember everything that he said when he was here about what he needed, so.
Yeah.
We'll lose the minutes, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, Mulligan, that, I'm happy to do that.
I'll, I'll second that one. And I'll, I'll move the fire station debt.
Tyler, you want a second in the seventeen?
I'll second seventeen. That's it.
That is it.
What's, and what's eighteen? Eighteen is a petition.
Well, it's the, uh.
No, eighteen is yours.
Oh, sorry.
Eighty-three-six.
Eighteen and nineteen are yours.
They're ours, right?
Yep.
So why do we cross out our, um, recommendations then? Because there's no money involved?
Correct. Yeah, you're not allowed to place those without an appropriation.
Okay. So, um, I, I can move eighteen. I just don't know that I can speak to it intelligently. Can we ask, uh?
Dr. Cheryl Smith.
Cheryl?
Yeah.
Well, can they, can the conservation chair just speak to it himself? I mean, they're, they're asking for it. They've done the research. They, they know it.
Uh, yeah, I can, uh, I can ask them to be prepared. I don't know who they will send up, but, uh, we'll have, we'll, we'll ask them to have somebody ready.
I'll second it.
Let me go back real quick. Article five, was that, Donna, you doing that one?
Yep.
Who was second?
Me. Yep.
I'll take nineteen, and I'll speak to it.
And I'll, I'll second that.
Cool.
That was easy.
Yeah. How do we go about the other articles? Is that Bonnie just going to read them off and?
Yeah, you don't have a traditional role in that, uh, as a board.
Well, we're not used to seeing this many, me and myself. That's, the list gets longer every year.
The, um, so you don't, you don't have to do anything. You don't have to say anything. You don't, you're not required to, as a board, do anything.
So can I squa, I mean, I read what the lawyer said about twenty-four, and I'm getting around, not openly talking about that in general, I'm just saying, we, if that for some reason passes, we're just going to deal with that after? Or the school board will deal with it after?
Yeah, twenty-four. Yeah, any, anything that you're, this is one, one opinion, of course, your attorney's opinion on what, you know.
Yep.
I think you can rely on it, but it is, it's an opinion. Anything that is considered illegal or unenforceable, you as a group will decide after town meeting what to do with it. You can ignore it, and if somebody wants to challenge you on that ignoring or try to force you to do something with it, you can respond at that point. You can not implement whatever is called for by the, you know, because you have made a decision or following guidance that is illegal and unenforceable. So, um, so you don't have to do anything.
Sorry, don't mean to speak, speaking to say that. I just, something popped in my head, and I just wanted to fix it, put it out there. Because we do have, come to the question again, um, uh, where'd it go? Article twenty-one.
Yes.
Now, we've tried, the board's tried in the past by, under the recommendation of what the lawyer said, but we're just leave it alone.
The, your attorney has suggested that you propose an amendment.
Right.
It's up to you if you want to do that. If you want to do that as a group, you want to do it as individuals. We were a little sloppy in that in the past in terms of are we doing this as a group or are we doing this as individuals? So I'd suggest that you make a decision one way or the other. If you want to do something as a group, then stand up as a group and say, we voted to propose this amendment, and then propose the amendment. If you don't have a consensus about that and one of you individually wants to do something, then you, of course, can do that, which is where we were at some point in the past on these as well. We've ended, we've ended up in both places, with the board proposing amendments or individuals who happen to be on the board proposing amendments. It's up to you if you want to do that as a group. That shows up again in twenty-five, I think it is, the, uh.
Yep.
The dumpster diving, uh, article. We're talking about your lawyer's opinions, and you haven't released them to the public, so I'm trying to.
No, no, I got, that, that, you're, I got you.
So you have, you, you can, you can answer that question on twenty-five as well. Do you want to do something as a group or not?
Well, can we take a straw poll now of however he feels about twenty-five?
Well, dumpster diving?
Do we want, do we want to stand up and recommend, or do we want, is anybody, anybody in favor of this article? I'm not.
Nope.
I'm not either. I mean, I've, I've done it in the past, too, but it's, there's too much risk involved.
There is. Somebody could get hurt, somebody could, I mean, we can go on. There is. Somebody could get hurt, somebody could, I mean, we can go on with that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not, I mean, materials, like copper and stuff like that, I mean, the town, we should be scooping them up.
We should. They should be separated up, because the, you know, copper and brass and aluminum, you know, the, the precious metals, semi-precious metals, there's big money in those right now. We need every bit of fat we can in our revenue streams. If somebody takes them out of the town's dumpster and brings them to the junkyard themselves, you know, we're out. Or if somebody gets hurt, dive it, dive it into the construction dumpster, or the metal bin.
If it passes, maybe we have the discussion of, it's costing money now to use the dump. Well, we gotta make up the lost revenue.
Yep, somehow.
Somehow we're gonna make up the lost revenue. People are gonna take all the good stuff out of there.
Crazy thing is, is that, all this could have been avoided if, if the people that wanted the swamp shop would have took care of it. Would have stepped up to volunteer, right?
That was, this is opening it up to any recycled material. This is really, if you want to take somebody's TV, you can take the TV. If you want to take, I mean, there's no limit to what you can.
Right, right.
Pillage out of the.
That's true.
I mean, I hope nobody tries to think to haul away all the aluminum cans, because it's sitting there.
That would be valid under this.
Well, again, we can't stop them.
That's true. I mean, there's nothing on the books right now, I suppose.
Right.
You know, so, you can't have a recycling operation if all of your recyclables are being taken away by somebody for their personal benefit. Right?
Exactly.
So, that would, pretty much.
So is, right now, we would stand to, all together on that, as not supporting Article twenty-five?
Yeah.
When we do speak, when that does speak up, will somebody look, decide on the fly? We can, who knows, you know? Again, it's not gonna make a difference. We're just speaking at deliberative session. It's gonna still come down to the voters when they vote it, so it's just.
Do you, you want to do it, since you're so passionate about the recycling thing?
You just want me to take all the ones that are junked on it? Is that basically what you're saying? The poor guy that's going for reelection, throw him in the fire?
I'll do it. I'll, I'll do it, I'm fine.
No, I'm just kidding, Donna. I don't mind. I was just joking around. I mean, I think, we could decide to it that moment. It doesn't matter. I mean, we all know what it is, so. It's not gonna be a long speech by any means. It's gonna be just a.
Um, would it be your intention to propose the amendment that the attorney, uh, suggests?
For which one?
For twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Uh, basically to, uh, can I read from the attorney's recommendation publicly? We have, you, you comfortable with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, I recommend a sentence be added to the end of the article to read, quote, "The Board of Selectmen shall have the authority to adopt regulations, policies, and procedures to implement this article."
Yes.
So if it does pass, that would give you some authority on how to.
Limitations?
On how to implement it safely and add some
Okay.
common sense to it.
Now, there's a little question, will the people there get to vote? Sorry, just sort of refresh my memory on this. We're gonna ask that to be put on there and changed.
Yes, you would be proposing an amendment to the article before it goes to the ballot.
Yeah. And if the voters at deliberative approve that amendment, then it goes on the ballot and it's amended, right?
As a, okay.
Yeah.
How do you feel, feel about number twenty-six? I mean, I don't know if we, we can't change the percentage amount they put in there, because that'd be changing their whole petition.
Well, on one hand, you know.
I mean, I like the fact, the theory behind it, but.
Yeah, me too.
I don't know if it's workable for.
For us, I don't know.
Future expenditures that might happen that we need to spend more on.
I mean, we're, we, we'd be putting a limitation on future boards that we don't know if it would hamstring them, you know, in, in a time of difficulty, but, you know, at least in my years on the board, you know, other than this year, we've done a good job at keeping our raises. I don't think we've had, uh, an increase over four percent prior to this year. So, would it, you know, is it gonna help us? Or hurt us? Not really. But, but I know, like, other towns that have implemented tax caps, and I can, I can talk about Dover, because I grew up there, they regretted it, you know?
Putting a cap on there, or not having a cap?
Putting a tax cap in. They, they regretted it after a while. It, it, it complicated things unnecessarily.
Yeah, you could think about worst-case scenarios with this, too.
Right. Right, you know, on the other hand, a future board may be, go off the rails with spending and, and so, I, I really don't, I really don't know what the right way to go on this is. There are mechanisms to override it, so if we, you know, if the, if the board was in a position where, you know, the, um, you know, the increase was, you know, six percent, and there was just no way to, to get around it, th, you know, there are mechanisms in place to get around the tax cap, right? So.
Others being held at four percent in practice with times of inflation.
Well, like, like this, like if it was in effect this year, we'd be in a world of hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But let's say, let's say, three years down the road, we need to add one more officer, one more fire personnel, and then we have a, a two percent increase, we're gonna cap ourselves at the four percent? Because you don't want the insurance benefits to go along with the salaries, and then if the, something, I mean, it, four percent, I mean, is a number that's, again, I didn't make up the war, sit this position. It'd been nice if they would have put like five or six, but.
Yeah. No, I, I can totally envision a scenario where, like, on the personnel side, something happens that really increases our costs to the point where we're hamstrung on our material needs.
Right.
Can't afford to buy salt, because it's, it would put us over the tax gap, for example, you know?
I think there's a lot beyond our patrol.
Right, so that, I mean, it is.
Right, and this doesn't account for that. Like inflation this year is almost at, this past year is almost at seven percent. You know, the select board can't, can't account for that.
We have the petitions in file, don't we?
Mm-hmm.
You at your office?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Actually, they're, I think they're posted online already.
Is it posted who signed it?
Yeah, it's, it's all public document.
Oh, good, perfect.
Yeah, just a reminder on the, the way, the mech, this mechanism governs only what the budget committee proposes to the deliberative session.
It's the budget committee cap.
Right, so, the, and that's, and it's only the operating budget. Right, it's not all the other appropriation warrant articles. So, in reality, what will happen, if you run into that nightmare scenario where you need more than four percent, is two things. You will pull expenses out of the operating budget and make other warrant articles out, out of them, or you will propose an amendment to the budget at the deliberative session, which is standard fare, and, and the, and the deliberative session can go up by as much as ten percent, generally, on the budget committee's recommendation by statute. So, those are the first two workarounds that you will use if this is in place.
But after the budget committee, say the budget committee capped at four percent, and that gave a significant cut that we couldn't deal with, we still have the option at that point to move stuff to a warrant article?
Not after the fact, and, I mean, given the way the calendar typically works, I think you might struggle to.
That's the kind of thing.
To pull that off, I don't know.
That's the kind of thing that we would have to anticipate before, and make sure that we're not sending something that's greater than four percent to the budget.
Yeah, because you don't control the timeline of what the budget committee got, yeah.
Got it.
So in general, are we?
I mean, I don't think I want to get up and talk against it.
I just let it, I'd, I'd just let it sit and move the way it is.
Just be silent a little bit?
Yeah. I mean, if somebody asks for the opinion, we can.
Talk about it, but.
Yeah.
Individually or however.
Yeah.
Okay. Which brings us back to twenty-one. You want to talk to this one, John?
I ain't touching it with a ten-foot pole.
I ain't saying nothing about it.
I mean, I think we should put the, you know, the same protection in it as we, as we do every time. But, uh.
Well, it hasn't, that protection hasn't.
Hasn't always worked.
No, it didn't work last time.
It wasn't approved.
Right.
The protection wasn't there, because it wasn't, the amendment wasn't accepted.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the same problem's gonna be running if everybody that's on those addresses shows up for that deliberation?
Well, this far, at le, in these neighborhoods, far fewer people.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So the total of it is seven tenths of a mile, all of those roads together? Is that correct, John? Uh, I'm sorry, Chris?
Uh, yeah, with, yes, within a tenth of a mile, probably, yes.
But still, within seven tenths of a mile, you could have buried cars, buried bodies, buried hazardous waste. I mean.
Hey, it's a three-hundred-year-old town.
I know.
Anything could be on the ground.
Buried wagons, you know, horseshoes. And I, we've, we've had a couple surprises on the other roads already. I'm just reluctant to open the door to more of that.
Well, I don't think there's any more after this.
No. It's true.
Tyler, you got anything to say about that?
No, I'll just let, let them go, go through the process and see what happens. They weren't written by us, they were written by the people.
Very disappointed, because, uh, select board stance for the last three years hasn't been to try to make the.
Protect, protect the town, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, that's what I mean. I want to, definitely want to do that, is I don't know if we, we discussing them, you know, imagine people over there plotting to plan it to do this, do that, before we even get to a vote.
Yeah, well, the petitioners will, will get up and speak to it, you know? I think they're just, they're riding the, the wave of goodwill after last year's vote, you know?
I mean, I've seen, like I said, you know, anything with roads, I've seen, I think of Strawberry Lane, there was a few other before that, I mean, built by spec, perfect roads, and weren't accepted because somebody from Strawberry Lane forgot to show up. Everybody thought it was a big joke, and they had to wait till the next year. But it just happens, the, the stuff, if the people show up, they have support, maybe they'll, it will pass, but if they don't, probably gonna be like everything else. If you don't show, if you're not there, I mean, that's.
Yep.
One thing that this town's good at, it's not gonna pass.
Anybody feel motivated enough to propose the amendment? Either as a board or as, uh, individual?
I mean, I'd, I'd rather we do it as a board, if we're gonna do it.
I think if we're gonna do it on the board, as a board, we'd have to be an emergency.
I mean, it doesn't bother me, I mean, again, it's, it's, my feelings never have changed from where they were in previous on that, on this particular topic, so.
What kind of shape are these roads in? Like, has Sean had a chance to go out and drive them?
Uh, they're emergency lanes. I, I mean, uh.
They're out, like, those roads around, uh, North River Lake Road, right?
Uh, it's, um.
Mattaway?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's, this is virtually all of, almost all of the emergency lanes that weren't accepted last year. Remaining emergency, with one exception, so.
Yeah.
The stuff off of Cooper Hill that reaches North River Lake, that's, uh, snow and, I gotta find them, whatever it is. Uh, and then the ones around Nottingham Lake, are Little John, Langley's in there, Sherwood's on the other side. Uh, snow and Rogier and Water are all on North River Lake. We, we detailed, with the, the petitioner was kind enough to discuss this with me before submitting the petition, so we were able to narrow down exactly what we're talking about, so that's why there's a, a specificity here that we didn't enjoy last year.
Yeah, yeah.
So we all have a very clear understanding of where we're talking about. You know, we don't, you know, that, it's what we, what we've always maintained, and we detailed it by.
Right.
Map and lot in some cases, so that will ease, if this is adopted, it will ease that burden in the future.
The burden of discovery.
The, yeah, um, but the condition is no different, or no better or worse than much of what we accepted last year.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, just off the top of my head, snow is in pretty good shape. Uh, Rogier and Water, Water's pretty well washed out, it's a hill. Little John and Sherwood are parallel off Case Road, reaching back to Robin Hood there. There's, there's a drainage problem at the Case end of one of those. Uh, like a catch basin problem. Langley's on the other side of that lake, it's a little, that's narrow, really narrow. Uh, so, it's, it's an old story. This is, this is, you've heard this song before.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Water, water to Rogier's worth a drive, if you, if you haven't been out there. That's worth looking at.
Water and Rogier?
That's just, if you haven't been down into that neighborhood before, you, you'll get a sense of the road caliber there.
I mean, I don't, honestly, I don't know. I mean, I don't feel passionate enough about it, because it's seven tenths of a mile. I mean, it's consistent with what else would happen with the other roads?
Yeah, it's not a lot of mileage, and I, yeah, I'm not gonna. I don't want to do anything but without the board's support.
Do we like that one, Mike?
That'd be all of them. We decided with that one, right?
Yeah.
Do we have any other ones to speak about?
But any, anybody on the floor could also.
Yep.
Stand up.
Yep.
Doesn't have to come from one of us, so.
All right. Yeah, everybody goes with their group, pre-ready, right?
Do you wish to release these from your attorney?
No one's to talk to, right?
Uh, no, it's your, it's your privilege communication, so, um, I asked her to write them in the event, you know, in a way that it could be released if you chose to do that. We've done it in the past to explain, you know, why you're going to do what you do in the future, or how the board views these things.
I, I, I have no objections to releasing them.
There's a couple pieces that the public might get some value from, and, or petitioners might get some value from, if you read carefully, so, uh, I don't see any harm in doing it. It's a unique kind of communication. I typically recommend that you don't share your communication with your attorney, but this is the one case where we've historically done it, and, um.
No, I think it's a.
May, may be some value to the, to the body, you know, as they deliberate.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, if you need help getting prepared, holler.
Yep.
Clock's ticking, obviously, so.
So are we gonna sign this?
Yes, that is the formal, and this is for. That is for our new part-time officer. If you are willing, you saw the bio from Chief.
Yep.
Uh, Woodman today.
Do we need to vote on that, or is that just?
No, that's just a signature.
Okay.
So, Chris, do I, when I reach out to Budget Committee, Michelle, or, or to John Decker, that they have him reach out to you?
Uh, yeah, if they need anything, certainly, um, or if they want to chat through, the problem is, I don't, uh, the problem I have is I don't know the story of the budget. I see the numbers that are left, but there was a whole lot of stuff that happened in there that, yeah, I, I can't tell the story, so I, um, I can't really be a good resource for you in the moment that day, because I don't know where the numbers came from, so... Um, you, you may have to help each other, you and the committee may have to... You know, be ready to answer questions that I...
Yeah.
Maybe, historically, maybe I was able to answer, but I really don't feel like I know this, uh, to be of any assistance, so... But mechanically, or anything, if there's anything I can do to help them, I'm, absolutely, I'm here all week and... Great.
Back to Tyler.
Did you sign both?
What's that?
I signed it. Oh, there's two of them?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah. All right.
Quick, uh, Chris, non-public?
Yep, since, uh, we have no more business at hand for tonight, uh, we will say goodnight Nottingham, and once we leave our, our non-public session, we will automatically seal the minutes and recess the meeting.
I'll make a motion, we go into non-public for RSA ninety-one dash eight phone three two A.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hi, Don, I do.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Night Nottingham.